Do we have everybody back on? Ms. Adams, do we have? Oh, we need her.
All right, we're good. You want to pick your role?
Uh, yes, please.
Stephanie Adams?
Here.
David Wortman?
Here.
Nelson Bollier?
Here.
Judy Justice?
Yeah.
Jeanette Nichols?
Here.
Bill Rivenbark? Mr. Rivenbark? Lisa Eastep?
Here.
At this point, we're missing Mr. Rivenbark. We'll watch for him.
Okay, we will go ahead and get started to keep things moving here. So I believe this is Dr. Smith.
This actually will begin with Ms. Adams.
All right, Ms. Barnum.
I have all of those names, and others unfortunately. Okay, hello again. So I'm going to start with sharing the data poll on our failure data report for quarter one, 2020. Oops, went too fast. Actually, I didn't, it's fine. And I want to explain in your packet, you have more information in your packet than will be presented on the screen. So we'll be highlighting high school specifically, and you have additional information in your packet that goes beyond that. And I'll give you hints when we're going to move on to the next one. So in your first information here, high school, number of students failing one or more classes. And so in this, we've provided with for you the number of students failing by high school, traditional and non-traditional, along with the number of students that are total for that school and the percent of those students. So I'll give you a minute to peek at those, so that I don't read line by line for you. You can see that there's a strong range from lower percent of students to higher percent of students. Your next information in your packet is hidden, so I'm going to move on to, or not hidden, but we're not presenting that information. The next is the high school number of classes failing. So if you'll notice, we've got the students identified by each school who are failing one class, and then two classes, and then three classes, and then four or more.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Ms. Barnum?
Yes, sir.
Is, uh, is, is this? Is this something that's happening all over the state?
Uh, I'm not sure that I can answer whether it's happening across the state. That might be more of an instruction answer. And actually, Dr. Smith is on the way. I can give you some information on last school year, though, but here's Dr. Smith.
Okay.
Yes, sir. In speaking with districts of comparable sizes, they are experiencing high failure rates with their students as well. And then also in speaking with other districts within our region, they're experiencing high failure rates as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Rivenbark, for that question. So then I'm going to move on to the, so three, four pages long. Number of students failing by race versus number of students. So in this chart, you'll see that on the, the red column is your number of students failing, and the blue bar, not column, bar, are your total number of students. So you can get an idea of the proportionality of the particular group of students that are failing.
You know, we have received this information, but I'm always seeing on the screen the first slide for the, the public that's watching. Could you please put the slides up that correspond to what you're talking about, so they'll know what you're talking about? So we've seen it before if it logged on, but yeah.
Absolutely. I'm sorry about that. I completely forgot that I'm in charge of the remote.
Yeah, if you could go, yeah, go back from the first chart to the next one you talked about, the two classes, three classes, because that wasn't up there at the time. So because you immediately jumped to the race, if you could go back to the ones about, just so we could, the public could see that information.
I think this is the second one. This is, this is the right one right here.
There was one other one in between. I might.
So, let's see, hold on one second. I'm going to go all the way.
There you go, that was.
Okay, here we are. Here we are. Let me spend a little time with this one. I apologize. Okay, so you can see on here, thank you, and I'm going to hold the remote in my hand. It reminds me. So you can see on this one, one class versus two classes versus three versus four. And again, I'm going to skip through because we're highlighting certain areas just for high school information. So in the columns here, the red column, you've got the number of students failing, and this is by race, and then the number of students. So this gives you an idea of the proportionality.
So Black and Hispanics are not doing real well.
Well, you can see that it, that it, by the graph, you can see that it's close to 50% of students in those demographic groups are not passing. They're definitely failing.
But, but these, but these are not, like, high school, these are all students, right?
No, this is still, this one actually is middle and high school.
Middle and high school, okay.
Mm-hmm. This does not include elementary.
Is there any way to break that down into socioeconomic groups? Have you done that yet, or could you do that later on and let us see that?
We actually don't have access to the economically disadvantaged information. So those students that are in all of those, we don't have that outside of testing or child nutrition. And so that information is not in power school. It's not, it's beyond the need to know for us. And so we can focus on those areas where the students are identified.
So mainly not having access to that information.
Right, right. That's confidential to us.
Confidential to us, yeah, but in generic terms, it, yeah, would be nice if there was a way, but.
Right, right. And I think that that might be something that Dr. Smith can answer with regards to testing and accountability. We can have the overall information, but we can't break it down at the, at the student level. So we brought this information from the student level and re-aggregated it. So we didn't start with broad reports. We did, that was disaggregated information. We took student-level data and then aggregated it into this reporting, because these reports don't actually exist to us in another way. So that information is not available to us in power school, and so it's confidential to these instructional decisions.
So we don't have a whole, we don't have a whole lot of American Indian and Pacific Islanders living in Wilmington, do we?
Right.
Okay.
And how does this correlate with the attendance of these students?
Oh, good question, Jeanette.
Right, so we have definitely had difficulty monitoring attendance, and the attendance in many ways has been, with students being on remote, has been based on their level of either logging in and accessing for some period of time, but not the requirement for the entire instructional time. So attendance taken is a moment. And so it's difficult to match up, when you're in face-to-face learning, you can identify that the student was with you the entire time. It's really difficult to identify their presence the entire time in a remote situation, because they, they may be muted, they may not be on video, and they may have logged in for a period of time and not the entire time. So the next one I'll move to would be high school failures by race. And this is where, Mr. Rivenbark, you can see the total number of students in the different races. So the first column will be that number of students failing, and then the total number of students in that particular race. And then you've got the percentage of students failing. And again, this is a percentage by race. This is not, that far-right column, when you add those together, that's not going to equal 100. So you're looking at, you know, for example, American Indian makes up 31.82% of failures. That's not how that reads. It's that 80, it's that 31.82% of American Indian students are failing at least one course.
And that, and that's this year under the COVID restrictions?
Yes, this is first quarter of 2020.
Okay.
By course, correct?
Yes, by course.
And, and Ms. Barnum?
Yes, sir.
I, I'd like to ask you a question. Again, is this, and you may need to ask Dr. Smith, is this something that's happening all over the state, or is it just New Haven, Connecticut?
So I think that's consistent with Dr. Smith's response a little earlier, and she's just nodded to me, that this is something consistent across school districts, larger school districts and districts within our region. So this is not an experience to us alone.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So next, as we look.
Well, I would just, also, nationwide, this could possibly be a trend also. Has Dr. Smith gone outside our state?
I agree, Judy.
Yes, yes. She's responding, saying yes, that it's pretty consistent from what she understands across the nation. So now we look at high school failures by grade level. So you have an idea of the number of students failing in the ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade compared to the total number of students. And that would be in the bars. And then in the right, you'll see the total number of students in the ninth grade who are failing versus the total number of students in the ninth grade. So you can see by percentage, 35.19% of ninth graders are failing at least one course compared to 30.24% of 10th graders, 29%, 29.6%, 0.06% of 11th graders, and then 21.37% of 12th graders. So we see that our ninth graders are experiencing a higher rate of course failures than our upper grades.
Which is troublesome.
And they've just entered high school, so it's more of a challenge as well.
It really is.
And isn't it, the research also supports that ninth-grade failures contribute to dropout, higher dropout rates?
Absolutely.
Right, look at the difference in the numbers between the ninth grade and the 12th grade as far as overall population. That could have something to do with it.
Right, so in looking at, in looking at our enrollments, we have more high schoolers this year than last year, but part of that is because of an age bubble moving up. But yes, we can, we can see that we've got this strong percentage, but while we see that we have lower numbers of students in elementary.
Ms. Barnum, again, how does all this stuff translate to last year's numbers?
So if I look at, I brought that with me, because we were just able to pull that. It's a pretty labor-intensive report. So in looking at all of our secondary schools, for example, so I'll go back to total numbers. Let me figure out which slide it is, and I'll do a comparison for you. This one is just high school. Okay. Okay, so if you look at this, in comparison, you've got, of our middle and high schools, all but three have a higher failure rate than they did last year. So we do have one school that pretty much has maintained the same, with a very low rate of failures, around 2%, and that would be C-Tech. If we look at our other schools, for example, Career Readiness Academy at Mosley had a 12% failure rate at first quarter last year, and looking at 29% now. Our middle schools, Murray and Trask, were around 6% and 7%. And if we look at the next slide, we can see that those are much higher, at 24.67%, and at Trask, 40.45%. I don't know if there are any in particular. The highlights, I think, are the ones that are, you know, more significant would be, you know, high schools like Ashley High School at 15% last year in first quarter, and then this year at 39%. I don't know if there are any in particular that you want to, that you want to see, but all but three have significant increases at around, one has a 42% increase, and then we've got 37, 33, and it kind of just runs down. But only three have, have a more positive rate now.
Why, why do you think that?
Well, I think that, and I know that the Instruction Division is going to share a little bit more about the instructional implications of this, but from the data poll, we know that this is a very complicated time for a lot of folks. This is a complicated time for our students. This is a complicated time for parents who are supporting them and teachers who are supporting them in this remote hybrid Plan B. And, and so I think we're seeing just the outcome of some of that stress. But I would like for the Instruction Division to be able to talk a little bit about the instructional implications, and that might help a little more.
Oh, it's, it's interesting that Wilmington Early College, C-Tech, Isaac Bear knocked it out of the ballpark. And I'm just wondering why? What, you know, why, what is, because they're smaller schools?
I think there are probably endless number of factors. I think, again, I think COVID is just the most stressful part, and we've really flipped our instruction around, and then that makes it really a lot more difficult on students. So I don't know if I've answered those questions, but as far as the data sharing, if you have any questions with that information, please let me know, and I'm going to hand it off to Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Barnum.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite Mr. Al O'Brien to the podium. He's going to speak specifically with you around the work that high school principals have done and their response to this data. And then also, he's going to talk briefly about student-focused groups that we've been conducting in trying to better understand our, our students' response to this as well. And so at this point, I'll invite up Mr. Al O'Brien.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for an opportunity to talk to you about the instructional response in regards to the current failure rate. So let me see if I can get our slide to the right point. Am I going in the right direction, am I going in the wrong direction? Okay, thank you.
And for those that are at home, this entire presentation is up on the agenda, I believe, right? For people to be able to go back and look at at another time, so thank you.
Okay, so I think this is, this is where we come in. So before we get started, I think it's important to note that while this is our current data, our goal is for this not to be our final data. So if you would look at this through a sports analogy, we're down at halftime, but we hope to be up at the end of the game. So this is just our current data, and we know that this current data, you know, reflects a concern, but we do hope to move forward in a positive way to, to be more supportive and to, you know, extend some, some opportunity and to support all of our students so that they can be successful as we go through. So as we, we started looking at the first quarter data, we thought it was important to make sure that we captured some voices from, from the schools. So we talked to high school principals. We had an opportunity to meet with them collectively and then individually, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as, as we get into the next slide. But I think it's important to try to understand the drivers behind the increased failure rate. And I think that Ms. Barnum and Dr. Smith alluded to a little bit of this in their presentation, but this is difficult. This is difficult for, for students. It's difficult for, for teachers. It's difficult for parents. Everybody's trying to learn a new learning environment. So we're going through not only new procedures, but also trying to teach content at the same time, and that's difficult. That's hard to do. So this might not be a good fit. We do have students that are thriving in an online environment, but not all of our students do. So that being said, I think the biggest takeaway that I had in talking with principals, and I think you probably heard some of this tonight as well, is that student engagement has been a challenge. You know, when you have them in the classroom, you know, you have them there, and, and you can have a, a higher level of engagement just simply for the reason that you have them there in front of you. But it's not always the same in an online environment. There are more distractions. And we also heard that in our student focus groups as well. So in, in moving forward with high school, we had an organizational meeting. Dr. Faust put together a meeting with the high school principals, and we looked at this data, and we had a collective meeting to kind of talk about what next steps were going to be. And then I went to each of the traditional high schools. As Mr. Rivenbark pointed out, the, the early colleges and some of our smaller schools are faring a little bit better. So what we are looking to do is, is not only work with, with those small schools, but really focusing more on our traditional high schools, because that's where we're seeing the higher failure rate. But our, our goal, again, is to decrease the, the failure rate and also decrease potential retention rates and any negative impacts to our, our graduation rates. So that's kind of our, our goals as we go forward, and those are some of our next steps as we move forward. And so these are some of our strategies for, for failure reduction. And again, these strategies came from meeting with principals. So and principals, of course, talk to teachers and, and talk to their stakeholders, but we wanted to make sure that we gathered that voice as well. And of course, we're doing a lot of communication, and we want to continue to do that and learn from each other and see what might be working in its school. And we want to make sure that we, we have those communication efforts. But we also want to hear from the students. So we, we collected student voice. Our counselors did a great job of hosting student focus groups to kind of hear what their input was. What are the kids saying about all of this, and what's their take on it? Going forward, much like last year, we would like to recommend using the state graduation criteria of 22 credits versus the new Hanover County Schools' criteria of 28. Again, this is what we did last year. We would need a waiver for that, but we think that that'll be most supportive for our students, that we try to, to support them in that way, again, much like we did last year, recommended by the state. And then we would also look at, you know, when we looked at some of the student grades, those grades were really not recoverable. You had students that maybe they had a zero average, or maybe they had a 10, or a 13, or a very low average. Well, it, it's hard to overcome that mathematically, as you guys know. So looking across some of the other districts and seeing what they're doing, we're looking to also do what some of those districts have done, which is implement a 50 as the minimum score for student work. So there is an opportunity for growth in that second semester. So we'd like to see students have that opportunity to grow in that, that second semester so that they can move forward and have an opportunity to earn their credits. We would continue to utilize mastery-based grading if it supports student success. So if a kid was able to, even though they might be failing, but they're able to do very well and show mastery on a test, that could be a data point that could support the student as well as they go forward. And so even talking about the possibility, and again, this is just a proposed possibility, of taking a look at seniors that might be at risk and possibly bringing them back for, for four days a week so that we can make sure that we're providing the supports that, that they may need. And again, that, that's something that obviously we would need input from, from you guys on, but that was something that the high school principals articulated, that they would love to be able to, to bring some students back if they felt like that they were at risk of, of not graduating. So looking at, you know, more days a week for those students, if possible.
And Mr. O'Brien, I think that's something we need to look at immediately.
Yes, ma'am, I, I don't disagree. So thank you for that. And then middle school is, is a little bit different. I mean, at the high school level, it is credit-based. You have to earn credits in order to move towards your, your diploma. So you have to have credits to be promoted from the ninth grade to the 10th grade. Middle school is a little bit different, but we're working on failure reduction in similar ways to the high school. Couple of things to keep in mind, most of our middle school courses are year-long, and middle school promotion and retention is really based on different processes. It's not based on earning credits. It's more of a collaborative and a collective decision at the school level with principals, counselors, and teachers involved making those decisions in regards to what promotion and retention looks like. So even though those numbers are also elevated at the middle school, we feel like that we will be able to move through those in a positive way as well. So those are our kind of next steps from the instructional point of view. I'm happy to try to answer any questions if you have them at this point. But again, I'll go back to that sports analogy. We may be down at halftime, but our goal is to, to not be down at the end of the game.
Mr. O'Brien, I have, I have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Talked about the mastery approach. Isn't that lowering our expectations of our students?
You know, I think that certainly some would, would make that same argument, Mr. Wortman. I think that what we're trying to do is instill hope for our kids and, and instill an opportunity for them to have an opportunity to recover versus not having an opportunity to, to move forward. And, and so some of that way, and again, that's just one data point that we would look at. You know, other strategies that we've talked about, and some of the strategies that we put up there were just some of the highlights. There are other strategies. But other strategies include, you know, opening assignments back up from the first nine weeks to make sure students have an opportunity to continue to work forward on those. But we, we would like to make sure that our students have the possibility of, of moving forward to earn credits versus being shut down while we still have eight weeks left in the, in the semester.
And I, and I agree with that, and I think that's why the four-day-a-week for some of those kids, I think is a much better option than doing the mastery approach, allowing those kids to get back in school, giving them the support that they need so they can, they can learn their subject instead of us kind of allow them to move forward with not necessarily learning that. So hopefully, we can look at those approaches and as a last resort, consider that mastery.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate that, and I do think that most teachers would, would want the students to, to do the work. Not most teachers, I think all teachers want, want the students to do the work. So, and again, that's part of the strategies that we've talked about as well. I've talked to principals about, again, opening up assignments from first semester to, to really require the kids to do that work. So these are, you know, multiple different strategies, but we want to make sure that we are keeping hope alive for our students and then also, you know, providing that opportunity for growth. We don't want it to be a one quarter and done. We still have a quarter left to, to make positive ground, but thank you for that comment.
And I understand that we send in on reports to parents, but how do we ensure the parents are really getting this information and are having an opportunity to assist their student?
So that, that's a good question, Ms. Nichols, and, you know, certainly we're using some of the, the traditional methods that we have always used. Dr. Faust and I had this conversation, you know, what would we do in, in Plan A? We would, we would reach out to parents. We would have counselors reach out, teachers would reach out, and they're doing that. We want to continue to do that, but we also want to, to do some other things as well. So I know some of our schools have done some very simple things like connect ed calls, mailing out letters, using an email approach. I talked to a high school principal the other day. They reached out to their seniors and had an overwhelming response of, of parents calling back in to say, yes, I want to talk about this. We, we weren't aware that it was as dire as, as it is, and, and so, you know, we, we have had a positive response in that. And we'll need to continue to do that, and we'll have to do that all the way through. We're, we're going to work with, with everyone, and, and we want to try to make sure that we, we have a collective and collaborative approach as we go forward.
I noticed that Myrtle Grove Middle actually has decreased their failures this year over last year. I'm curious, what are they doing that's working that other middle schools could possibly replicate? I'm curious, what are they doing that's working that other middle schools could possibly replicate?
Yeah, so I, I think some, some, some of the principals may have used some different strategies in, in trying to, you know, work with their students and work with their teachers and families. I know that some schools used an incomplete versus a failing grade. So I know at least one of the schools on here, while it looks like that they had a lower failure rate, in all honesty, they may have used an incomplete instead of a failing grade, which then still allows the opportunity for students to continue to work. And that would have skewed the, the data a little bit. So to be fully transparent, at least one of the schools, I think, probably used incompletes, which is okay. And they did that in, in an effort to make sure that they were leaving that, that possibility open for students to continue to work on their work. So at least one of the schools, I think that data is probably skewed a little bit, if that makes sense.
One of the things I see as the biggest challenge is communication. Obviously, during regular school years, teachers spend a lot of time communicating with parents. They see their kids every day and letting them know what's going on. Our teachers are literally overloaded right now and have been since last March. One of the things that it sounds like you're doing is getting more people in the building, outside of teachers, involved in communicating with parents. And a lot of, and truth be told, a lot of the staff that normally would be dealing with the day-to-day situations involving students on-site have time that they could be doing things like communicating with parents, maybe setting up groups with parents, assisting parents. I'm sure that's what you're talking about. But I do have a concern that this was not picked up during the first nine weeks. That just, you know, that, that just has, in a sense, we failed the community, the parents, for not letting them know in other forms outside of what we expected the teachers to communicate that this was happening. Maybe some schools did, but overall, we need to do better. It sounds like we are now, but I, you know, I'm, I'm concerned that we didn't pick that up right away.
I, I mean, I would actually push back on that a little bit, that I don't remember ever getting a report like this since I've been on the board. And I appreciate that to, to this extent of, of the failure data. I think it's important that we need to know the data to know how to improve. And I really appreciate the fact that, you know, it doesn't always look pretty, but we have to confront where our gaps are. And remote learning is an opportunity for all of us to learn. We're figuring out what works, what doesn't. And I think that, you know, I, I appreciate that you've brought this forward and shared it with us to this extent, you know, by racial breakdown, by school breakdown. And, and truly now we can dig in and figure out how, how can we do better?
Well, I would say yes to, to both of you.
The reason I brought that up, Stephanie, is because I've been in schools and I've worked as administrator, I've worked as a teacher, and everybody's got a different role. The rules have changed. It really flipped because of the pandemic. I'm not even, even going to say that there's any blame here. It's just we've learned something. But being in the schools, you don't need the data from all the schools. You need the data within your schools. And that's what the administrators do. And the wraparound services work with them to assist when you can't have the teachers having the time to be backtracking and, you know, trying to get the stu- parents and students involved in what's going on. So I, I'm just saying that we, we should always look at the individual schools and try to do better within that setting. We don't need this data, data to figure this out, in my opinion.
Ms. Justin, I, I see what you're saying, but you also have to remember that the first quarter, there were no children in the schools. The, you know, it's tough to recognize these, these issues, and I understand we're getting this now. But there was really no one in the schools. So this is, you know, the testing came forward and this is where we're at.
The administrators always have, you can always-
Of not being in school. I mean, that, that-
No, it's not. Because all that data's on, all that data's there that any principal, any counselor, they could have gone in and saw that things were missing on these levels.
With all due respect, we asked the question about what last year's data was as opposed to this year's data. And you saw, it was about 20 to 25% more per school. The only thing that's changed between last year and this year is the kids aren't in school. That is the difference.
Right. And the people that are in the school that got the overall view, which are the administration and wraparound services, should have been able to see that within the individual schools, is what I'm saying.
I, I understand what you're saying. I, I just couldn't disagree with that more. I think the challenge that was put on our teachers for remote learning was, was tremendous. And they done the best job that they can, but there is no learning like face-to-face learning.
And, and we, and, and we've never, ever, ever, since 1918, been through anything like this. We didn't know what was coming. We, we didn't understand it. And I think every-
Agreed, agreed, Mr. Ravenbark. And I will say, I know we keep saying our teachers are overloaded and they are extremely overloaded.
I'm not talking about the teachers. I am not talking about the teachers.
Parents and the, parents are the same way and administrators are the same way. This is not just a, this is an everyone challenge at this point.
Mr. Wartman, I absolutely could not agree with what you said more. I, I think you're a thousand percent right. You know, I've spent the last eight months, like everybody else, looking at COVID-19 data, the dashboard, the numbers, the positivity rate. And as bad as this data is, to use your halftime analogy as a Patriot fan, I feel like we're down 25-3 toward the end of the third quarter. That being said, of course, I know everything will work out, I'm a Patriot fan. But what we're seeing here, and I think it's so important for the community to understand this, for the very first time, we're looking at the damage in graph form of what this virus has done and what our reaction to it has done. And I'm not saying the reaction wasn't what we needed to do. I'm saying there is real damage here. It's long-term damage to the chair's point about ninth-grade dropout rate. And I'm not interested in blame. We're all doing the best we can. And we have a, a big lift. We have a big lift in, in front of us. So I appreciate this data, but I, I do agree with Mr. Wartman. This was, everybody's doing the best they can here. This is the pandemic looking at us with the numbers.
And I'll just end and say, I think our goal is to collectively move together to try to have a, a positive outcome for, for our students. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
I can, I can tell y'all this. These are unprecedented times. Nobody ever, nobody living has ever dealt with anything like this. I mean, there's things that happened that I didn't agree with, but they happened and we are going to get over them. We're going to get things straightened out. And I promise you that the county will help the schools figure it out.
Appreciate that, Mr. Ravenbark. We'll do to that.
And we'll get through this.
All right.
I promise you.
Thank you, sir. All right, let's move along here to the-
I have one, one quick, one quick follow-up and I'm done, I promise.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Faust, we mentioned a couple of things that we were looking at doing. When can we start doing some of those things? Because that's the important thing. I know we're talking about it, but I think action at this point, instead of kind of waiting to see if the data gets better, can we institute some of those suggestions as soon as possible? Do you need us to tell you to institute those or to start working on those? Or what do we need to do to, to, to try to, I guess, help our students out?
So we are, we're already working on some of those. What Al was stating in, I forget, I think it was the slide almost at the end?
Twenty-six.
Number 26, so those are the things that we're doing now.
The only one, Mr. Wartman, that is an action item at some point will be a waiver needed to decrease the graduation credit from 28 to 22, which is what we did last year, I believe.
And the grading scale.
Right.
Grading scale and also the potential for some kids going to four, for four days.
Yes. That, to me, I think we need to implement as soon as we can.
Well, you know, I agree, Ms. Nichols. But-
We're, we're on it.
But, you know, I mean, and I, I don't say that jokingly. I, I think the ones that are, that are getting behind are going to continue to get behind.
Absolutely.
So the word that we have is, is the educational gap is going to continue to spread apart. And by not addressing that now, we have the opportunity to address that now. And by not doing it, we're, we're complicit in allowing that gap to increase. So that, that's all I'm saying.
Are you finished? Okay. So the purpose of this was to show the board where we are and then to give you a view of what we are going to be doing or starting to do. So you're right with all of those, the commentary that you stated. It's just increasing the, the gap amongst all. And so we, as Al spoke earlier, the things that we would have done, had a person, those touchpoints, I'm not sure we tapped all the way into the touchpoints. And so principals are aware of what needs to be done and what's got to be done. We have another principals' meeting on Thursday. We'll be going over some of the information with them. Al has his thumb on the data now. And we will definitely be having conversations around not the what, but the how. How do we get what's working in your school? So it's going to be more of a personalized method for schools and it won't be a, a one-size-fits-all for all of the schools.
Great, thank you. All right, I believe our next item is accountability day-to-dig. And this is also Ms. Barnum. Back to the microphone.
Okay, thank you. I'll try to be less confusing this time. I would like to also introduce Dr. Allison Jones, our new Director for Special Education and Related Services. So very excited to have her as a part of our team and to have her expertise in the district.
Welcome, Dr. Jones.
Great to have you. So, you know, last month, you had a presentation from the Instruction Division, including accountability on the annual accountability report. And so this month, we're taking a little bit of a data dig with the data around students with disabilities. I'm going to keep this in my hand again. So first, I want to give a little bit of an overview on eligibility for special education services, which really is about specially-designed instruction. So first of all, students that are identified as needing, having a disability and needing or requiring specially-designed instruction have a few things in common. For one, a part of their eligibility determination is that their achievement level and their rate of progress is lower than, oh, I don't know what happened, is not consistent with students with, that are typically developing or their typical peers. Do you want me to wait until the presentation comes back up? There it is. Thank you. So as I was sharing, as a part of eligibility for determination, you have to look at, should I just keep going? You have to look at the achievement level and the rate of progress for those students with disabilities. And so the purpose of that IEP, that Individualized Education Program, and the purpose of that team is to really look at those prerequisite skill deficits or those foundational skills that students with disabilities are missing. And so an IEP is written to address those identified needs that are specific to that one student and not really to address where they're missing their grade-level standards. The IEP is supposed to bridge the gap and address those basic skills that have either been missed or where specially-designed instruction was really needed to build those. And so it's important to note that while our students show progress on their annual goals in their IEPs and our EVOs data, which is our collective compilation of all types of data, instructional data that gives us predictors and projectors of how students will perform, our students with disabilities are consistently growing in EVOs data and meeting IEP goals and objectives, but they're still not performing at grade level. And so again, we understand that grade-level performance is generally not indicative of having a disability. But let's talk a little bit more about what that really means. So overall, our percentage of students with disabilities within the district sits around 12.1%. We sometimes move anywhere between 11.5% and 12.75%. And, and that's proportionately about where we're expected to be within the state and across the nation. And you can see at elementary, we're 11.5%, middle 13.1%, and then high school drops just a little bit at 12.4%. And you see we have ranges from school to school. And that really doesn't necessarily line up so much with the types of services in the schools. It really lines up with attendance zones more. And so overall, we have about 3,400 students in the district that have IEPs. The interesting thing about services for students with disabilities is that over 65% of our students with disabilities, SWD, receive the majority of their instruction in the general education classroom because the majority of them are not isolated or separated from their typical peers for the majority of their instruction. And this is not determined at the district or school level. This is determined at each student's IEP team level. So that Individualized Education Program for each student and that team, including the parent and the general ed providers and the administrators and the special educators, determines that amount of time. And also, it's based on the least restrictive environment. So we understand that Special Education Services is a really delicate balance of dosage. You only want to provide as much as required and you don't want to over-provide because you're removing from a typical education setting. So when we talked about the annual accountability report last month, we looked at student proficiency by schools and by target groups. But specifically, the target group for students with disabilities indicates a composite proficiency of 20.9%. And that is, that is discouraging. But we've also talked about, we understand that our students with disabilities, part of an eligibility determination is that they are not meeting grade-level standards and they don't meet the rate of progress needed. So I want to talk about the data behind the data. So we know, because we've talked about this over time, over the past six years, we have increased the graduation rate for students with disabilities from 53.7% to 71.9%. And within the past year have been higher than the state average for graduating students with disabilities. And knowing that students with disabilities generally need more than that four-year timeframe because they have additional services to fit in along with high school courses. And I also wanted to illustrate that our EVOs growth data shows that our students with disabilities overall met growth in math, reading, and science. Overall, across the district, met growth. And so over to the right, I've given you by every EOG or EOC, the student, our students with disabilities have exceeded their growth in math sixth grade, math seventh grade, science fifth grade. And then you see the list in the middle of met growth. You've got math fourth and fifth, math one EOCs, and then reading, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and science eighth. And then to the right, did not meet. We have three areas, three EOG and, or, and EOC areas that our students with disabilities did not meet growth. So looking at that, math eighth, eighth, reading third, and English second. So all of this is to really provide that sense of urgency to close the gaps. We understand eligibility requirements, but we also understand that we're growing our students with disabilities, just not exponentially enough to catch up with their typical peers, therefore not catching up with grade-level expectations. And so our focus is not to just take the data and sit on it, but to really look at how we can comprehensively, as a district team, address these needs. And so I know you've heard more from our Instruction Division on NC Star Comprehensive Needs Assessments and NC Star as our school improvement planning tool. And so a focus collaboratively within New Hanover County Schools is that our school improvement teams are focused on these two standards. A 2.16 that really focuses on units of instruction being aligned to goals of students with special needs, including students with IEP goals and objectives, along with AIG goals and students that are English language learners. The next one is a 4.02, where we've got teams of educators, special education, general education, and our related service providers. And those would be like our speech-language pathologists, our school psychologists in some cases, and then occupational therapists, physical therapists. Those providers meeting regularly with special educators and general educators to enhance and really collaborate on the instructional planning and the implementation of instruction for students with disabilities. So that we have that alignment from their IEP goals and objectives to the grade level standards. A part of how we are focusing on this, and this has been very much a collective effort with the Instruction Division, is the professional development for all teachers. This is not the professional development for special education teachers alone. So really focusing on reading research to classroom practice, math foundations, and then a professional development called All Leaders, understand, support, and collaborate to provide evidence-based instruction. Because what we know about evidence-based instruction is it can be replicated to find the same results that were studied. So as a part of this, and this does hyperlink to the NC SIP site, NC SIP stands for North Carolina State Improvement Project. And this is a tool and a resource to us from NC DPI that really focuses on improving instructional outcomes for students with disabilities. And so these three training materials really focus on these areas. And these are nationally evaluated, nationally training. Our trainers are trained by the national teams and they go through pretty rigorous training requirements to be able to train our teachers then, really to have enhanced competencies in understanding how to teach students with persistent reading needs, but also the use of the data and having the instructional practices to improve outcomes overall. And really, the point of this is that this should be focused toward any educator who works with kids with persistent reading difficulties. And of course, we know in the earliest grades, this can prevent having to identify a student as having a reading difficulty or a disability in reading if we have really strong, basic instruction in the beginning. So then the math foundations really moves into increasing that content knowledge for our teachers, really helping them have a different approach, different attitudes about the teaching, understanding at a really discrete level, the particular knowledge and skills needed, and then teaching strategies to accompany those. And again, it's based on evidence-based instructional practice. This is not a best guess and a collection of materials that we believe will work. These are the strategies and the instructional practices that are, over time and time and time and time again, shown to produce outcomes and stronger outcomes. And so the essential elements in here would be that commitment to access and equity in that instructional delivery, a powerful curriculum, of course, the tools and technology needed to support the materials, having that assessment aligned and meaningfully aligned to grade level standards. And then it also can increase that culture of professionalism because you've got that coaching process as a part of this. And then the All Leaders Training, which includes the principals, assistant principals, school improvement team leaders, special education team leaders and liaisons and case managers. This is where that focuses on a team-based professional development, where you have a team of practitioners learning together and going into a deeper understanding of implementation science, which really focuses on action steps and understanding the drivers and the teams and the stages of implementation to make sure that that's working well. And all of this pulls together the tools from the National Implementation Research Network, a great powerhouse warehouse of instructional materials, so that we can look at our participants gaining skills and understanding how to develop, implement, and evaluate plans for improving core instruction and the achievement of students with disabilities. So how do we measure this? Well, we circle back through. We talked about our NC Star improvement teams and improvement plans, school improvement plans. That's where those two standards or components are measured by school teams. And then also looking at individual and cohort growth, like what's been presented to you in this, looking at where students were exceeding and meeting growth, and then where do they not meet? And then looking at individual and cohort proficiency. Our proficiency for students with disabilities is not where it needs to be. Students are growing, they're meeting growth, but they've got to exponentially meet growth to find that grade level proficiency. And so all of this pulls together for a collaborative analysis among all educators, general and special, to really focus on student data to match learners to the appropriate instruction in the appropriate environment and with the appropriate curriculum materials. And so I want Dr. Jones to be able to share a little bit about what she knows to be her task ahead of her within New Hanover County Schools, and then offer you guys a chance for any questions.
So just like Julie mentioned, we need to, when we are talking about the analysis and the growth data or lack of growth when it comes to students with disabilities, there are three areas, like Julie mentioned, where we did not meet growth in math eighth and reading at the third grade level and English to EOC. So even though we have interventions in place or programs that our schools are using, we really need to double back and look at the integrity and how these interventions or curricula are actually being implemented and determining whether they are being implemented with fidelity. So we have the resources at our hands, but the question is, how well are we actually implementing them? So when I was thinking about how we can approach this, in my head, I was thinking of it from two lenses, from those three content areas and looking at providing possibly booster sessions for, as far as PD for our teachers in those curricula that we're already using. And then also for the high school reading, our students that have IEP goals and reading, what can we access to actually help them in that area? So we're kind of going back on possibly looking at an online program that can address that for our ninth and 10th grade students that have reading goals or IEP reading goals. But then also looking at things such as awareness of the whole child, looking at MTSS, looking at assessment, whether we are actually using appropriate assessment measures, so that we're looking at it from an individual, like those specific content areas, but then also from a grander scale, so that we're providing that core support when it comes to growth. Because at the end of the, at the end of the day, we want to make sure we're, we have sustainable school improvement. We don't just want this one-shot lens of, you know, this is how we're going to do it now, and then that's it. So we want to look at it from a grander scale, from all of these different avenues that we already have in place, but not have them working and, you know, in different silos and individually, but looking at them from a greater framework, and then also targeting those areas that Julie mentioned in her presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, welcome.
Do any board members have any questions? Thank you for sharing this information and this data, it's very important.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, quarterly budget summary for the period ending September 30th, 2020. Welcome back, Mary Hayes-Smough.
Really quick, I just wanted to present to you the quarterly expenditure report for all funds. As of the end of September, we were, we were at 27.47% either spent or incurred. So we're right on target with our budget plan. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Next item is the facilities naming update. And this was an ongoing discussion over the past few months regarding our facilities. There was, over the summer, we talked about doing a inventory to see how our facilities have been named across the board. And I think, Mr. Anderson, if we could maybe have you just, to answer some questions, what you have found in regards to our facilities. I know that you've done a deep dive to look at our schools, to see where, how that naming process went along. But as far as our facilities, our stadiums, additional buildings, libraries, what?
Well, and that may be, may have been my misunderstanding. The, when the, when we first, when the board first made the request, I thought you were talking about school names. And so we had put that information together and done some research and I think provided everyone with that document. There is not a comprehensive list of spaces, fields, stadiums, you know, facilities within each school complex. So I have reached out to all the principals and we're compiling that information. They're having some difficulties. I've heard from several principals that, you know, that we may have, they have a name of a facility, but they don't, they're having trouble figuring out, in some cases, who that person is. And we're trying to help them. In other cases, you know, we may not be able to ultimately determine when and how the space was named. But we are in the process of putting that together now. And, you know, as part of this, I gave you a little summary of at least going back to 2014 because I think prior to 2014, the, the common interpretation of the policy that was in effect at that time was really the naming, it says naming school facilities, is that it was intended to look at naming schools and not facilities and spaces within schools. Subsequent policies, you had made changes in, let's see, I'm sorry, I said 2014, I meant 2011. You had made subsequent policy changes or revisions in 2014, 2019, and 2020. I think the policy is very clear at this point. I summarized what those changes are, reviewed those with Ms. Stagner, and you have that for information. And I hope to, I hope to compile a very comprehensive list because for one thing, I think it's very interesting. I enjoy the history of it and, and doing some of the research as well. So we'll bring that back to the board at a later date.
When are we going to do it?
We're doing it now. We are.
I think we need to name it Masonboro.
Mr. Reibenbach, that's a different agenda item. This is in regards to facilities, non-school facility naming.
Yes.
I think that maybe where some of the confusion came in, because I think at the time that we were having this conversation, the Parsley conversation was also going on, and so I can see how it could have gotten.
I apologize for that, but I think it's.
I apologize, I apologize as well.
No, I think, I think it's great to have both. And like I said, I've enjoyed, you know, the history involved in it.
Well, we appreciate your time putting into that and we'll plan to put that on a future agenda. Is there any other questions from the board?
And I just want to, Bill, this was in reference, I believe, to the stadium at Laney High School is what started this conversation. But I'm glad to hear that Mr. Anderson is going to come back with even more information because I like him, I'm a history buff. And it would be interesting to see what the process has been and if the process was in any way compromised with situations that were possibly not in the best interest of the district, we should talk about that.
Well, Mr. Anderson, I can tell you that I knew Mr. Bryce. He was my principal at Tolleson. So Roland is one person and Bryce is another.
We just need to go to you, Ms. Nichols, for the history. Thank you very much.
Back from the Civil War, all the way, whatever you need.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the Board of Education interim meetings. And I'm actually going to, this was an item that was brought to light by Mr. Bowyer, so if you'd like to speak to this one.
So it's 9:53 right now, I'm sure I don't have to tell you all. I think in the, you know, in times of COVID and now looking at bringing new board members on, it really doesn't seem like a good idea to be apart for four weeks while we discuss these issues. I think there's more on our plate right now. And so I would like to see a permanent interim meeting, at least for the next six months. Then we can revisit during the summer, but, you know, I know we always try to do our best. It really is difficult for the public to have us here at midnight. That's asking a lot.
Public wants to watch too, that means they're awake and they don't need to be doing that here.
So I would just like, I don't know if that would be an action item, Ms. Stagner, but I would really like to make sure that from here on, for the next six months, we are meeting at that interim point.
Your current policy does provide that interim meetings can be held as needed. And so it's really just a matter of scheduling. I don't know that the board needs to vote on it at this point, but the superintendent and the board chair can agree to schedule a meeting.
What is, what is the feeling of the rest of the board?
I would encourage you to wait till you get your four new board members, to get input from them.
Well, this is something we've discussed, though, off and on since I've been on the board because it seems like we always take these really, really long meetings and we could be a lot more effective. In fact, a lot, we've been having a lot of interim meetings because of COVID. So, yeah, I'm sure the other board members that will be coming on can see the value of it. I mean, a lot of them have been watching the meetings and know what's going on here.
All right, great.
I would encourage you to plan on it, just because that way it would allow the new board members to plan on it as well. To that point, are we going to have one for this month?
We do, we have a special meeting scheduled for November 24th. I believe that, yes. We will. Are we going to talk about that later? I believe so. I'm not sure. All right. And if there is no more discussion around interim meetings, the next item is Policies for First Reading. And that will be our policy chair, Mr. Bowyer.
Yeah. Real quick question, sorry about that. For the Policies for First Reading, are these going to go to a second reading when the new board members are sworn in? And if so, would it make sense to kind of maybe push them off a little bit?
That's a very good point.
Sorry about that, I just.
No, it makes sense.
So. Or could we do this at the special meeting?
Yeah, we could do it at the special meeting.
That, I guess, yeah, that would, that would be a good idea.
Okay.
We can adopt these at the second meeting. Ms. Stagner, can we send the batch that we did today to those new board members? Is that possible? So they can review them. I know they're, they're going to be on for first reading in December, but I'd like them to start looking at them now.
Certainly, they're public documents, there's no prohibition on sending them to the board members. They are not obviously allowed to do any board business until they're sworn in, but there's nothing that would prohibit them from having access to those policies that have been already.
Okay, thank you. That being said, I did not hear anything from my fellow board members about a policy that they wanted to pull and discuss. I did briefly want to call the board's attention to Policy 3100, if you could pull that up, please. With the advice of Dr. Smith and Dr. Faust, the policy committee talked about adopting a curriculum committee. I suppose we used to have one. I suppose we used to have one, is that correct? But we haven't in a while. So the curriculum must be developed to meet state and board requirements using the current statewide instructional standards as a foundation, and must be approved by the board. The superintendent or designee shall establish a district curriculum committee to coordinate curriculum planning and ensure that the curriculum is aligned with the current statewide instructional standards and includes, and includes subject area competencies for each grade level. The committee will include central office administrators, teachers, and school administrators representing the various schools and grade levels, as well as a board member who will serve in a non-voting capacity. Somebody mentioned earlier the importance of including teachers in some of these committees. I definitely agree. You know, in light of all we're facing with regards to COVID-19, and the many challenges that our county will face over the next three, four, five years, I think the timing of this committee is important, and I just wanted to call the board's attention to it and answer any questions. Great. So with that, Madam Chair, we need a motion to push these policies for second reading at the September interim board meeting.
There a motion?
November. November.
This is information only? We don't need to, okay?
Yeah.
All right, we will see these again in a few weeks. Thank you very much, Mr. Bowyer. And now I believe we are going back to recognition of achievement. Is that correct? Is that where we moved it to?
Do we, do we want to consider, do we want to consider moving that to the interim meeting? It's, I mean, being, being 10 o'clock, like, I want to make sure that these people are recognized. I don't know, it's up to the board.
I mean, I'm open to that.
I don't want, I mean, I feel bad, but I don't want, I want people to recognize them. I don't know how many people are left watching.
Are going to be here, yeah.
Well, are there anybody there, is there anybody there that came to be part of the process?
Well, it's, it's video. It's a video recognition.
On video? Okay.
Then I would agree, let's save it till we can.
Yeah, come on.
We promise you'll be first on the docket.
Do we need to, Ms. Stagner, do we need to make an amendment?
Yes, you've already adopt, you've already adopted your agenda, so I would recommend that you have a vote to move that off the agenda.
I move that the recognition of achievement be postponed till the interim board meeting.
There a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Adams?
Stephanie Adams.
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Nelson Bowyer?
Aye.
Lisa Eastep?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Rivenbark?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, thank you. Our next item is Head Start. Again, Mr. Bowyer, with the monthly report.
Thank you very much. And again, I will be extraordinarily brief, given the hour. By all, by now you all know our enrollment numbers of 260, 85 three-year-olds and 100, I'm sorry, yeah, 85 three-year-olds, 114 four-year-olds. I do want to point out that the Head Start group had its review call conducted on October 28th. At 10:00 AM, we had excellent participation from the Policy Council, great discussions about how we are continuing to build a culture of safety at Johnson with a focus centered on transportation services. A few additional requests from the review team were sent the following day on Friday, October 30th. And we feel very confident that we are going to receive some good news from, from the federal Head Start oversight. We have continued to implement our quality improvement plan. Of course, part of that was the phone call, but we've done our training with regards to the safety of our youngest students. Mrs. Miles is on Zoom, but is an extraordinarily short Head Start liaison report for the first time in quite some time. So, does anybody have anything? Of course, we can take a quick look, I'm sorry, forgot, a quick look at our expenditures. Nothing new to report, everything is on track. Anyone have anything? Okay, thank you, Ms. Miles, for all your work, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bowyer.
Thank you, Ms. Miles. All right, next item up is administrative personnel, Dr. Faust.
I'd like to recommend for board approval, the principal of Forest Hills Global Elementary, Kimberly Foley, and Title IX investigator, John Henry. So do I need to also recommend the interim principal?
That's not listed on here, but I would believe so. Interim principal also needs to be on the recommendation. Ms. Stagner?
Yes, if, if the superintendent's asking for approval for an interim position, I'm sorry, interim principal contract, yes, it should be approved here.
Okay.
And Chris Fur for interim principal of Forest Hills Global Elementary.
Great, we have the recommendation for a Title IX investigator and a principal and interim principal for Forest Hills Global. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Eastep, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Ms. Adams?
Stephanie Adams.
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Nelson Bowyer?
Aye.
Lisa Eastep?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Rivenbark?
Aye.
All right, recommendations pass, and we welcome Ms. Foley and Mr. Henry to New Hanover County Schools. And Mr. Fur, welcome back to another school as an interim. Thank you very much. All right, next item is the superintendent's report.
Madam Chair and members of the board, next week, the district will be celebrating American Education Week by recognizing teachers, education support professionals, families, and local organizations for the work they do on behalf of our students. We're also celebrating the innovations and wins that continue to happen in all of our classrooms in Plan B, with videos that take you into the school to meet the teachers and students who are happy to be back in our buildings and continuing to develop new and better ways to learn. Special education in our EC families were the focus of the Family Communications Committee October Roundtable, where they gave input on implement, improvements in communications at district and school levels. The district's new special ed director will be holding a roundtable question and answer with EC teachers later this month to discuss needs, supports, and professional development. To expand our outreach to students and staff, we are launching an interview series this week with student interviews, asking questions submitted by their peers. We will also be introducing a regular video blog for employees, along with live question and answers, where I can interact with staff directly to answer their questions. As part of our equity work with the district, we're working with Cape Fear Collective to produce a series of eight data-driven equity podcasts covering topics like the opportunity gap, discipline, student safety, and digital access. The series will be recorded and aired in December and January. There were some questions referencing, like, the goals. And if you go back and you hear any of the interviews that I had done when I first got here, the interviews were asking, what are your long-term plans? And so in those long-term plans, I would talk about the framework for a literacy, a literacy framework for our district pre-K through 12. I also talked about a proficiency rate of increasing our proficiency rate 10 percentage points and increasing our graduation rate. Someone took it out of context, so I thought I might want to clear it up, because no one actually asked me who was putting it out there. So you can't do 10 percentage points in one year, especially in a, in a COVID year. Well, I guess you could, I mean, I've, I did do nine in, in one district. But that was never the message. The message has always been long-term, right? So we're talking about three years. In three years, we have to have a plan. As you can see, we can't go in without a plan. So those are the long-term plans that have been spoken, and of course, you can see those on, on the videos. The other ones is, is that I was upset with teachers because they were not doing flipped classrooms. I promise you, when I walk in classrooms, I'm not looking at a flipped classroom. I am actually asking the principal to take me around to the building to introduce me to what they see on a daily basis. Has nothing to do with a flipped classroom. When I'm actually walking classrooms and giving feedback to principals, I'll be asking questions and looking for, checking for understanding. So that's a hint to teachers, when we actually do instructional rounds, if I'm part of them, after I do the introductory, when we're really in the, the meat of it, I'll be asking questions around checking for understanding. Are we teaching the complete standard? Those are the things that I'm looking for. It's not about the, the flipped classroom. So we can put that myth out and dispel that one. I definitely am not looking for a dog and pony show. I want to see the work in its authenticity. That's all we're looking for. COVID has put a new wrinkle in the way that we do education. And so I get it, I understand that it's, it's tough. I speak with individuals almost on a daily basis across the state about how they are coping, and when I'm speaking to individuals, I'm speaking specifically around principals, and what they're doing, how they're doing it. No one's mastering it. No one's actually at an accomplished nor distinguished. I don't even know if anyone's at a proficiency rate. And teachers, you know exactly what I'm talking about, when I'm naming those, when I'm articulating those, those attributes. The, the other thing that I definitely want us to talk about, or really quickly, is that transparency. When we talk about transparency and everyone is wanting to talk about our numbers, and why can't we post COVID numbers on a daily basis? I'll be really honest with you, there's not a COVID department. We don't have it. There is about three or four people out of Julie Varnum's team, and they have another job that they're assigned to in addition to doing COVID. And so when someone reports to a principal, because remember, it's on the honor system. Parents do not have to tell us that their child or someone in their family is positive they're not in school. They just keep their kids at school. So it's an honor system. It's not that we are not posting data. We may not know, and so you may actually know that your neighbor or friend of yours has symptoms or is symptomatic, and you may be looking at the sheet and say, well, hey, it's, they didn't report that, why didn't they report that? It's because they didn't report it to us. We can only report what we get. Now, of course, you know, if it's at the health department, they have a different set of rules. And so their rules are different, but ours are on the honor system. So we do have to understand, we do want you to understand that it's not about hiding numbers, and we have to settle up at the end of the week to make sure we go back and verify and counting numbers and making sure. There was a question about, why isn't everyone notified when there's an outbreak? Well, we do it per school, per classroom. There are letters that go home with those students if they are a part of that contact tracing or in that classroom. If you're not in there, we don't send you the letter. And you have to understand, that's, that's just how it is. We are, again, there's not a department that handles specific COVID. So they have, although COVID is important, and we do follow up, but we don't have export, experts on our team that are around COVID. That's not, we don't have that. We're getting updates three days a week, meeting with the health department, talking with the health department, sometimes daily, sometimes three, four times a day. I'm getting intel from Julie's office at some times, but we are rocking and rolling. We are trying our best to make it work. Everyone is stressed. There's no one more stressed than anyone else. So I want everyone to understand that it's just not teachers, we're bus drivers, we're food nutrition, we have those individuals who are sitting over there, who work non-stop, daily, receive the emails that sometimes are not the nicest emails, and are getting blamed for things around not telling the truth. Those individuals are not the people that you should be yelling at. We can't call everyone, that's the team. If there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven people, including myself, eight, that's all we have. That's all. There's, there's no one, we don't hide anyone, we're not telling anyone else not to do the work. But all I can tell you is this, when something is reported to us, we're trying our best to figure it out. We inform the board, we make sure, again, that parents are there, we are training individuals, we call it trainer of the trainer. So when we find out something, we bring it to the principals, we train the principals. Teachers, if you are having some issues or you're wanting direct contact, your principals are getting firsthand information about COVID from Julie Varnum. If you have a question surrounding that, go to your principal. If your principal can't answer it, your principal knows who to reach out to. It's that easy. I don't need for anyone to be stressing over, over are we being transparent about numbers? We have what we have, and that's all. I mean, there, there's no reason for us not to post a number. It's not going to do anything in the negative for us unless we have several clusters and we would have to then close down a facility. But if that comes to it, we would definitely do that. We're going to do what's right. We're not going to put anyone in harm's way. So, again, it is our. It is our, our pleasure to make sure that we are serving our community, when I say our school community, with the best of our abilities, to the best of our ability. And it does become somewhat painful to the team when they've worked non-stop, six o'clock rolls around, and their cars are the only ones in the parking lot, and then they get an email that someone wasn't being transparent. They've been there since, sometimes before eight o'clock that morning. And we work those long hours, and just because we go home, that mean that we stop. So that's the transparency, is that everyone is working hard. No one's working any harder than anyone else. We're not trading, as I usually call it, we're not trading elements, meaning we're comparing elements, who has the hardest job? No, we're all, they're all hard. Depending on what you do, it's hard. It's hard. But what we do want people to understand is, we're educators, and we know how to work, we know how to teach kids. That's what we do know how to do. And no one, we've given you some guidelines of flipped classroom. These are things that you can do. If you can't do that, that's too hard, don't do it. There's no one who is being big brother and peeping in on you while you're teaching. I'm definitely, I don't even have access to that, I don't think we even have, we don't have cameras in our classrooms, so we can't do that. That's not what we're doing. The goal is to make sure that we are giving our students the best education possible in these, in this scenario. And that's all. It's not going to be the best, and I promise you, we are looking at, how do we implement Plan A? We're looking at, how do we implement Plan B better? How do we look at remote versus our play, our face-to-face? We have individuals who want it one way, who want another way. We can't, we're going to start doing what's best for kids, and I promise you, that's, when we do that, when we look at and, and start to focus on our kids, we'll, we'll tend to fare a little bit better. So I want to thank the, the executive team for the work that you do. I see you every day. I know the work that you do every day. I know the emails that you get every day. I know the times that we meet on a daily basis. But I want to thank you for that, and it doesn't go unnoticed. And to the community, I thank you for holding us accountable, because that's what we want. We want you to hold us accountable, but we also want you to give it within reason. And that's all we're asking, is hold us accountable, but with reason. And that's all we're asking is hold us accountable, but with reason. So those are my reports. And I want to thank you all for the work that you do because I get your emails also.
Thank you very much, Dr. Faust. Appreciate that report. All right. Next item is the board chairperson's report. I don't have a report, but I would just like to just make a few comments. I would like to say congratulations to our current board member, Mr. Bill Rivenbark, for his recent election to the New Hanover County Commission. And we will be sad to see him go. And then also congratulations to our new members that will be joining us next month. Mr. Hugh McManus, Stephanie Crabil and Stephanie Walker. It's going to get really confusing up in here with all these Stephanies, but we will figure it out. So.
Almost have a quorum of Stephanies.
Quorum of Stephanies. All right. Next on the list, committee reports. And I would like to invite Ms. Jennifer Turner to the microphone. She has been patiently waiting this entire meeting to present the EDI committee report. And I just thank her for your patience and your, your participation on this committee. You bring a very important voice. And Dr. Smith, are you a part of this at all either? Did you need to be in here? Did you need to be a part of this? Were you doing any, okay.
Okay, as Ms. Adams said, my name is Jennifer Turner and I'll be presenting the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Committee Report. Now I'm going to have trouble with these. Okay, here we go. Who are we? So the mission and vision of the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Committee. The Equity, Diversity and Inclusion EDI Board Committee is a committee composed of district educators and community members who are focused on policy and procedures, establishing SMART goals and engaging with the community. The EDI Committee will ensure New Hanover County Schools celebrates our diverse community through growing a sustainable environment that embraces inclusion, provides equitable opportunities and affirms our humanity. The EDI Committee works in collaboration with the Equity Work Group to ensure that NHCS is providing equitable and inclusive culture to all students and staff. So you're in equity accomplishments that we've reached and that are in progress. So November 2019, we met for the first time as a committee. And during that first beginning of the meetings, we established our mission and visions, our mission and vision. In March 2020, like many committees, the work of the EDI Committee was halted due to the global pandemic. However, the committee continued to work and meet virtually. And we meet typically twice a month. In June 2020, on Juneteenth 2020, in response to the systemic racism crippling our nation, the EDI Committee released a statement denouncing racism, white supremacy, hatred, and affirming that black lives matter. The statement was later vocalized in a NHCS, stands for equity video. I'm sorry, I don't have the presentation in front of me. I'm trying to read the small print. In November 2020, this month, the EDI Committee rolled out an upgraded, updated website through the district site. The, the new site includes landing pages and equity training, resources, the work group, EDI Committee and FAQs. Oh, thank you, Dr. Smith. Okay. So now I won't have ashtray later tonight. Okay. So the committee is also currently seeking new members. So as mentioned, one of the things, or two of the things that we worked on was the NHCS stands for equity. The statement that you can find on our website regarding that. And then please do check out our new website. We have a great video that we all contributed, or most of us contributed to between the committee and the work group. And then various different landing sites that you can check out there. I won't read all of the trainings that the district has implemented and made available for the staff. But you can see that there are numerous trainings that have been available for staff within the district and then also book studies. I will list those books because those are great resources to check out for anybody that's interested. Culturally Responsive Teaching and the Brain by Zaretta Hammond, Despite the Best Intentions by Amanda Lewis and John Diamond, White Fragility by Robin D'Angelo, and How to Be an Anti-Racist by Dr. Abram Kendi. So some of the SMART goals that we have established for, within our committee. Communication, identify effective and ineffective strategies for community or family engagement planning for marketing and public relations. Within that SMART goal of communication, we've had Facebook Live bilingual Q and As, Town Hall, which has also been bilingual, SMS text and Connect Five, contracted translator, partnership with Latino Alliance, utilization of radio broadcast and Twitter chat. Another SMART goal is social and emotional learning curriculum. District-wide purchases for SEL to support needs of students. And here you can see that we've had K through eight curriculum is in place. High school resources have been included. District-wide PD on teen mental health and first aid have been planned and occurred. So then next, human resources. Hire HR staff that are knowledgeable about best practices for recruiting and retaining staff from underrepresented populations. This has been a really key SMART goal that we've been working on. New super, new Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources has been approved and will start in December 2020. Recruitment and retention, recruit and retain more educators of color. And part of the ways that we are working on that are to have the TA-to-teacher pathway, board scholarship for future teachers and survey current educators of color. And then two more SMART goals that we have is the Student Voice. Include student leaders and the work of the EDI Committee and Equity Work Group. There we've had student equity work groups at New Hanover High School and Ashley High School. Diversity Matters featuring student equity work group and student representation on committees. So another thing that we've been working on is a workflow between the EDI Committee and the Equity Work Group to ensure that we're not duplicating work, that nothing falls between the cracks and that we're really forming a cohesive work between the two groups. And so we established this workflow document to help with that. And to conclude what comes next, the EDI Committee will be focusing considerable time and effort on the following efforts. Equitable discipline practices for students, equitable board policies, equitable Head Start and pre-K program assignments, and equitable enrollment in specialty programs and choice schools. And so that is the conclusion of the, what the Equity and Diversity and Inclusion Committee has been up to for the last year.
Jennifer, can you just share with us, what is your interest? What brought you, because you're a community member, you're not a New Hanover County Schools employee. Could you just share with the board what brought you to the committee and what is your involvement with New Hanover County Schools?
Okay, thanks. So first and foremost, I am a parent. I have two children that are in the New Hanover County School System. Seven-year-old twins that are in second grade. And we are a multiracial, multicultural bilingual family. So from even my family standpoint, it's a very important thing to us. And for me personally, I've spent many years living abroad. I've been a Spanish interpreter. I've worked a lot with the Latino community here in Wilmington and other parts of North Carolina. And currently, I work at the hospital in sexual orientation, gender identity education, as well as the Health Equity Advisory Team. So I'm just very passionate about making sure that every person has every opportunity available, whether it's health, education, that there's no, there's always going to be barriers. We each have our own barriers, but that race, religion, sexual orientation should not be one of those barriers.
Thank you. You are the perfect example of why this committee is just fantastic because we have a group of, of views that are bringing just so, so many unique experiences to the table and just really appreciate, I mean, it's, it's twice a month. And you know, as community members and our New Hanover County Schools folks, it's a, it's a big time commitment. And there's some pretty heavy discussions that go on. So I just thank you for that. And thank you, Dr. Smith, really for spearheading this from, from the jump. So a lot of good work's been done and I'm excited to see what happens in 2021. Missy Steph, anything you would like to share as a, as a member of the EDI Committee also?
No, I appreciate the presentation. You've done a lot of work.
I appreciate the opportunity to be on that committee.
Any questions from any board members? All right. Well, thank you for your time and thank you for hanging around all this time. Appreciate it. All right. Next up is the Family Communications Committee. Do I need to go down there to do this? Or can I stay here?
Do whatever you want.
Can I stay here? All right. Is that all right? Just a few slides here to introduce the community to the Family Communications Committee. The Family Communications Committee is also made up of members from our community, New Hanover County Schools. And, and if you could go to the next slide, please. Oh, got it. All right. So, oh, back one, please. There we go. The goals of the Family Communications Committee is to review policies around district communication with our families. We are creating and implementing accountability to make sure that those policies are occurring at the school level and district level. And we, this is a really big part of our meetings. It's collaboratively discussing and developing innovative ways to reach out and involve parents. And this has been an incredibly important conversation now because we have to get to our families in a different way because of COVID, especially at the beginning of this year. So we do seek to gather feedback and we've done that in the way of roundtable discussions and we've gotten creative around those. And I'll get to that in a second. But we do create a calendar of events to generate interest and participation. You know, we've heard a couple of times tonight, the importance, this is, our school system is, is the center of our community. And we want to get as many people involved as possible and have a place to go to ask questions, share insights. And that really is what the Family Communication Committee is focused on. Go to the next slide, please. Ooh, I can't see what that first one says. I believe that was the establishment. Sorry, that was supposed to be in white. That was the establishment of the committee. Let me, we'll check that really quick. Can you read that? Is that right? And so we've been around for, since August of 2019. We approved, the board approved the change to, it used to be the Parent Communications Committee. Families look very different now. And so we want to make sure that it's an inclusive committee option. And we had our first roundtable discussion about a year ago, October 23rd. And these roundtable discussions have been really successful. We've invited our school community in to the BOE Center to talk about specific topics that are impacting different groups of students. So our first one was new to NHCS. Anyone that had possibly moved from a school to, you know, elementary to middle, middle to high. If you were new to the school system completely, just moved into the area, how were you able to find the information you needed? Out of that one, we've had, we had some website changes that came out of those discussions. And we learned a lot about what we were not getting to our, our families and what was hard for them to find. We did a multi-language, a multicultural language family evening. That one was a completely bilingual evening, Spanish and English. We partnered with the liaisons and had some really great discussions. And because of that meeting, that really started conversations around how are Connect Five calls going home? Are they coming home in English? Are they coming home in Spanish? The translations on the website was, was it accurate? So some really great feedback came out of that one. Title IX, our Title IX Director provided a fantastic presentation. It was right at the onset of COVID. So we didn't get as much of a group as we normally do. And then just most recently, we did take a hiatus on the roundtables during the last couple, eight months due to COVID shutting everything down. We just came back this past month and did a special education roundtable. And that one was via Zoom and in-person. So again, it's about being creative and gathering feedback. And it was a really good evening and appreciate Ms. Varnum and her team for, for sharing a lot of important information with our families and for our special education families that shared their feedback to help us improve. And I would just like to, if you could go to the next slide, please. I would just like to acknowledge, these are the members. The members represented on here, many of them are New Hanover County Schools employees, but they are also parents. And we do have a few just general community members that serve on this committee. We have parents that are just interested in, in sharing their perspectives. And then it's been a really important dialogue. We have PTA representation on here. And also Ms. Jeanette Nichols is our other board member that serves on this committee. And we look forward to what's to come in 2021. So thank you very much. Any questions about Family Communications Committee? All right. The next item, next committee report, our summary, is for the Title IX Committee. And I believe Mr. Boyer is going to do this one? Missy Steph, are you doing this one?
I am doing this one.
All right.
And I will be very brief. Attached to the committee report is a Title IX lookback that was prepared by Mr. Boyer, which we very much appreciate. And I'm not going to go through it. It is available to the public to look at. It's a very thorough overview of where we started, where we've been and, and really where we are now. So it, it's a very good, like I said, kind of timeline review. And we did go over it in our committee last time. Just a couple of highlights. One of the biggest ones obviously is, is the hiring, as Chair Adams mentioned, of our first ever Title IX Director, Mr. Gerald Lewis, who has been, who has been really instrumental in, in helping lead our, our district through some of the initiatives that we've been working on. I'd also like to highlight some of the partnerships that we've developed with some of the community-based organizations, Coastal Horizons, Rape Crisis Center, the Carousel Center. Those partnerships have brought us some training opportunities. And those training opportunities have been just very helpful. One of the things that we wanted to look, really look at was, you know, are we, are we addressing trainings with every single, every single group that we have in, in the school district? Every single, you know, at K five, at, at middle school, at high school, our volunteers, our, our teachers, our admin. And so that was one of the important tenants that we started with. And I wanted also to recognize our subcommittee chairs, Kristin Jackson, Amy Feath and Mr. Boyer. We, we, we did a lot of work over a fairly short period of time. And it was, I would say that, it's safe to say that we, we accomplished many of the goals that we started, we started with. And so what we are, are asking ourselves now as a committee is where, where are we going? What are we going to do next? And so that is really before us as a committee. Well, it's not before me. It's before all of the, the committee members going on. But it's been a, it's been a very, I would say, hopefully a rewarding process for everyone. We've, we've all learned a lot. And I think we've, we've developed some, some partnerships that weren't in place before. So I, I've been very grateful for the conversations that we've had. I do want to let everyone know that our next Title IX meeting is this upcoming Monday, the 16th at 3:00 PM, right here in the Board of Ed Center. And it will be streamed. So with that, I'll take any questions if there are any. Thank you.
I would just, I would just briefly say, you know, from, yeah, we all came on board two years ago. And this was a question, something I really wanted to, to look at and. a question, something I really wanted to look at. And it was Ms. Eastep who had the solutions and she really spearheaded this and I'm just proud of the work. So I just wanted to offer my thanks because I think it's been a wonderful, wonderful committee that's accomplished a lot. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other committee reports at this time?
I'll just tell you that policy is doing the NCSBA thing. And we'll continue to do it for a long time. And thank you, Ms. Nichols, for spearheading that for all these years.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I did, yeah, I wanted to just point out just a couple of things that are going on with a couple of committees I'm on. The Parents Advisory Council for Exceptional Students actually recognized a teacher this month as a Special Education Teacher of the Month, and her name is Ms. Jacqueline DeLucio, and she is a teacher at Winter Park. And she will be, as I said, recognized for the rest of this month for the outstanding work she's done. We do that monthly. Also, we have a gifted advisory council and we haven't been able to meet, they actually support the AIG programs we have in the schools, and it's made up of different people in our community and school personnel. And they haven't been able to meet, as I was saying, since the beginning of, well, during the spring because of the situation with COVID and so much has been going on. So they do plan on having a meeting in January. And some of the members of this group will be rotating off. And so what we do need are people that would be interested in joining this council. And if you would like to, if you're interested, you don't have to be a parent, that that would be great. In fact, we're specifically looking for parents that are AIG students or students that would be in the elementary grades because that's something that we do need to have input from at this point because the parents are literally, their kids are growing up that are on this group. And the person you need to contact, if you would like to be part of it, is Donna Sloan. And she is the AIG Supervisor here in the district. And her phone number and her email, I won't read it off now, but you can go to the New Hanover County School District site and she's listed under the AIG Director and you can get her phone number or her email there and go ahead and contact her if you'd like to be part of the group. So, as I said, we really do need more participation and it has been since last spring since we've been able to meet. But the need is definitely there. We will be meeting in January.
Thank you very much, Ms. Justice. Anyone else? I encourage our families to pay attention to the New Hanover County Schools website because we do periodically post opportunities to join these committees. And your voice is important. You're living it every day with your children. And so there's a lot of, lot of different types of committees that are available. And I think at this point, most of them do have some sort of family or parent representation. So I encourage you to keep an eye out for those as they're announced. All right, moving on. Thank you to all those that presented. Consensus items, Personnel Report, Dr. Faust.
I'd like to recommend to approve the Personnel List as Presented.
Great.
Move to approve the list as presented.
Do we have a second? I can't. Thank you, Ms. Eastep. Any discussion?
Stephanie Adams.
Aye.
David Wortman. Mr. Wortman.
Aye.
Nelson Boyer.
Aye.
Lisa Eastep.
Aye.
Judy Justice.
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols.
Aye.
Bill Rivenberg.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to old business, Policies for Second Reading, Mr. Boyer.
Again, having not received any guidance from board members about policies they'd like to pull and discuss, I will ask one more time. Going once, twice. Madam Chair, at this time, I would like to request a motion to adopt all the policies as listed.
All right. Is there a motion? So moved. Thank you, Ms. Eastep. About a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All right, any discussion? Adams?
Stephanie Adams.
Aye.
David Wortman.
Aye.
Nelson Boyer.
Aye.
Judy Justice.
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols.
Aye.
Bill Rivenberg.
Aye.
All right. Next item is the renaming of Parsley Elementary School. During the August Board Meeting, we voted to rename Walter L. Parsley Elementary School. And we, per Policy 5400, we opened it up for 60 days for recommendations from our community. And we have pulled out the applicable names that have been suggested. And I will say, New Hanover County, you're really funny. Between cilantro elementary, time elementary, it was, it was quite humorous. So I'm glad, I'm glad we had some funny, funny recommendations in these times.
Between two creeks was cool, too.
Between, yes. So here, based on the policy, it needed to be a, not regional, but an area specific, geographic name. And these were the finalists. So I would like to open the discussion up to the board based on this list.
Masonboro Elementary was overwhelmingly favored. I think it's simple, to the point. I can see a Masonboro Mustang. Somebody even did a logo already, which was impressive. But I personally would like to offer Masonboro Elementary up for consideration.
Other thoughts?
I'd agree. I'd second Nelson's motion.
All right. So is that a motion? Are you?
Yes.
A motion for Masonboro Elementary? All right, so we have a motion to, for Masonboro Elementary and a second by Mr. Wortman. Any discussion?
Well, the people that are living in that area certainly want that name, it seems like, from all the input we got from them.
All right. All right, Ms. Adams?
Stephanie Adams.
Aye.
David Wortman.
Aye.
Nelson Boyer.
Aye.
Lisa Eastep.
Aye.
Judy Justice.
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols.
Aye.
Bill Rivenberg.
Aye.
All right, congratulations. The motion passes and we now have Masonboro Elementary School.
And again, this does take effect next school year.
Correct, yes. So they have some time to do. All right, great. All right. New business. All right, Policy Waivers, and I believe this is going to Dr. Smith.
Would ask the board to approve the waiver of Policy 7440, Student Promotion and Accountability, and also Policy 7410, Grading Systems, just for the 2021 school year. Regarding Policy 7440, a waiver is requested for the portion of the policy that identifies the number of required credit hours for graduation, and also the number of paid employment hours for students enrolled in occupational course of study. Also asking, specific to Policy 7410, the waiver is requested regarding the school requirement to implement a plan for credit recovery and a student's ability to engage in credit recovery because of, as of now, it requires that the student be 50% in attendance and have a minimum average grade of no lower than 40%. And so specifically asking that these two policies just be waived for this school year.
You have heard the recommendation. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the policies, Mr. Boyer.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Quickly, Dr. Smith, can you give us an example of how this policy would act, or waiving this policy would actually work?
So for students who are seniors this year, they're currently required to have 28 credits to graduate. So if we had a senior who was only able to achieve 27 of those credits, but met the required courses, we would allow that student to graduate. And that's specific to the first policy, which is 7440. For the second one, if a student has not been in attendance for at least 50% of the time, they would be ineligible for credit recovery. By waiving this policy, it would allow a student, regardless of how much time they've been in attendance, they would still be eligible to recover that credit. So they would have to do the coursework that's associated with credit recovery, but they would be able to recover that credit. And then additionally, if a student had, and I know we're working on policy revision in regards to the lowest grade, failure grade being a 50, but prior to that taking place, if a student had a 33 and they wanted to pursue credit recovery right now unless we waived the policy, they would be ineligible.
Thank you. And I guess, just kind of a follow-up. In terms of attendance, I know we talked a little bit earlier that it's really tough to actually say, to maybe monitor attendance. I think that's what, that's what we talked about. Are there calls being made to families and stuff like that to try to ensure that there is some accountability towards attendance, intruency, and anything that like that?
There are, and we are now sending out attendance letters to families. But what we found is that because the attendance is taken so very differently than how we've taken it in the past as a result of COVID, there's inconsistencies. And so if I'm in Teacher's A class, I may be counted present. And if I do the exact same thing in Teacher's B's class, I may be counted absent. And so until we build some greater capacity with our teachers and recording attendance, and again, the policies in and of themselves are very vague and very open to interpretation, we don't want to disadvantage students because our staff members are interpreting the attendance policies differently.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, so you have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Adams?
Stephanie Adams.
Aye.
David Wortman.
Aye.
Nelson Boyer.
Aye.
Lisa Eastep.
Aye.
Judy Justice.
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols.
Aye.
Bill Rivenberg.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Motion passes. All right, next item, Disposal of Surplus Property. Mary Hazel Small.
I request the board's approval to dispose of surplus property no longer necessary or desirable for public school purposes. To be disposed in accordance with public school law. We are planning to have an electronic auction that would take place November 21st through December 6th if the board approves this.
All right, you've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to get rid of it.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you very much. Any discussion? Ms. Adams?
Stephanie Adams.
Aye.
David Wortman.
Aye.
Nelson Boyer.
Aye.
Judy Justice.
Aye.
Lisa Eastep.
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols.
Aye.
Bill Rivenberg.
Aye.
Motion passes. And you're not going too far. You're staying up here for some budget amendments. Mary Hazel Small?
Okay. The budget amendments are presented for your review and consideration. Just a few highlights. The state funding increased $322,751 and federal increased $8,846,906, most of which was due to a combination of carryover and the CARES Act funding. General fund transfers included a pretty large correction, but it really wasn't a change in last year. We just had a mistake in the, when we were building the budget book, and all the school supply allocations got coded to the wrong purpose, 5800 versus 51. So this is to correct that. So we just wanted to bring that to your attention because it looks odd, but it really isn't a change. And then capital outlay included $467,336 in new FEMA remuneration project grants for projects at New Hanover, High School, Williston, Ashley, Winter Park, the Board of Ed Center, and the Administration Building.
Thank you. You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the amendments.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Eastep. Any discussion? Adams?
Stephanie Adams.
Aye.
David Wortman.
Aye.
Nelson Boyer.
Aye.
Lisa Eastep.
Aye.
Judy Justice.
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols.
Aye.
Bill Rivenberg.
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the Contract with Learning Perspectives. Ms. Varnum.
Thank you. This contract is for an addendum to add in additional resources specific for students with special needs who are transitioning back into face-to-face learning, but might need some additional support because of the lack of face-to-face instruction for quite some time. Also, this contract will support LPI or Learning Perspectives Incorporated staff providing a hybrid support if they need to go into the home for homebound services to help us transition students back to face-to-face learning. So you have the original 2021 contract with signatures and the contract amendment here and request that you approve the increase of $167,464.
That was a big, was that, that's a, that's a large increase.
Yeah.
I was curious about that.
It's an increase of about 4,000 hours or maybe 4,400 hours of service. So we have compensatory services to compensate our students with disabilities for lost face-to-face instructional time. And we're really recouping and trying to recover some social and emotional skill standards that need to be supported in order to get to face-to-face learning that's beneficial. And this is supported through COVID funding.
Can I ask where that came from? So this is CARES Act?
Uh, it's not CARES Act, it's state COVID funding.
State.
This one's LPI. Yes, it is. It's state COVID funding. I actually have the contract amendment pulled up. Yep, it's state COVID funding.
Thank you, Ms. Varnum.
Thank you. All right, you've heard the recommendation. Recommend for approval. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. Is there a second? Ms. Eastep, any other discussion?
Stephanie Adams.
Aye.
David Wortman.
Aye.
Nelson Boyer.
Aye.
Lisa Eastep.
Aye.
Judy Justice. Jeanette Nichols.
Aye.
Bill Rivenberg.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Motion passes. And I believe you're staying up here for the next one. Memorandum of Understanding with Learning Perspectives.
Yes.
For the MOU.
Yes, so this memorandum of understanding really outlines our provision of school-based mental health services provided by same Learning Perspectives Incorporated. And these services are provided on a referral basis with parental consent. And again, these are on-school-site, school-based mental health services for our students. And this one, LPI, is our partner for the services at Anderson Elementary, Carolina Beach Elementary, and Cottington Elementary. And there are no fiscal implications. This is a billable service with parental understanding. It's no cost to the parent other than the billing and no cost to the school district. So I ask that you approve this one.
Thank you very much. You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Eastep. Any discussion?
Stephanie Adams.
Aye.
David Wortman. Nelson Boyer.
Aye.
Lisa Eastep.
Aye.
Judy Justice.
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols.
Aye.
Bill Rivenberg.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And you're staying up here some more. Another MOU. This one is for RHA, Health Services.
Yes. So very much the same. This MOU outlines the provision of school-based mental health services for students at Forest Hills Global Elementary and Mary C. Williams Elementary. And it's the same process. They are by referral with parental consent and it's a no-dollar exchange, meaning there's no out-of-pocket cost for parents and there's no cost for school districts. So I ask that you approve this MOU for school-based mental health services.
All right, thank you very much. You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Great. Great, thank you. Any discussion? This is like Groundhog Day.
Stephanie Adams.
Aye.
David Wortman.
Aye.
Nelson Boyer.
Aye.
Lisa Eastep.
Aye.
Judy Justice.
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols.
Aye.
Bill Rivenberg.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And final item, MOU with Coastal Horizons.
Yes, so final episode of Groundhog Day. This memorandum of understanding outlines the provision of school-based mental health services, same as before. But this would be for 14 listed schools here. And I do see that it says listed elementary schools, and that's not an accurate statement. It is, but these, the 14 schools. So of course, this is the same where there is a no-dollar exchange, so there's no fiscal implication, and ask that you approve this MOU.
Heard the recommendation. Is there a motion?
Oh, what the heck, just to keep my perfect score intact. I'll move to approve.
I should have snuck it in there, but I'll second it again.
Thank you, and thank you. Any discussion?
Stephanie, Stephanie Adams.
Aye.
David Wortman.
Aye.
Nelson Boyer.
Aye.
Lisa Eastep.
Aye.
Judy Justice.
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols.
Aye.
Bill Rivenberg.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, Ms. Varnum. All right, next item on the agenda is correspondence. Does anyone have correspondence that they would like to share? I will simply share tomorrow is Veterans Day, and just remember, your kids don't have school tomorrow. And also would like to thank all the veterans in our community for their service, in particular, our own Mr. Boyer, who served in the military proudly. So thank you very much, and you enjoy your Veterans Day off.
Thank you. Very much.
Announcements, following meetings, the board members will be participating. Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee will be held November 16th, 2020. That will be here, I believe, yes. And virtual. Yeah, that's our social, yes, correct. At 5:00 PM, that will be the work group and the EDI Committee. And the December regular board meeting is December 8th, 2020, at 5:30. One item that is not listed on here, we will have a special meeting. It is scheduled for November 24th at 10:30 in the morning. And so we will add that to our calendar. Closed session, we have no need for one this evening. That brings us to adjournment at 11 o'clock on the dot.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes.
The Title IX Committee is meeting on Monday at, do we see 3:30?
We moved it to three.
Three. Monday at 3:00 PM in the BOE.
All right, thank you very much. Final item, adjournment. Would anyone like to make that motion?
Me.
All right, Mr. Rivenberg. Is there a second?
I move for adjournment.
Thank you, sir.
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Any discussion?
Nope.
Stephanie Adams.
Aye.
David Wortman.
Aye.
Nelson Boyer.